June 2nd, regular meeting. Max, you can start the video now. Okay, and thank you, everybody. Again, let's stand for our invocation here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
With everything we've been facing over the last 12 weeks, put a lot of stress on a lot of people. A lot of us don't know what to do, don't know which way to go. But tonight, this afternoon, we'd like to sit here and really think about what is the most important thing here in the United States? And that is our people that we all love. And try not to separate a party, but this is time we all come together as one and be strong. And we usually have a moment of silence, but tonight, I think, we need prayer. Commissioner Bester, would you like to lead us in prayer today?
Oh, yeah, I'd be glad to. Thank you. Those that would care to bow with me. Father, thank you for this opportunity to come together as commissioners, as friends, as family, as faiths. We ask you blessings upon the business this evening, and we ask your healing hand and your touch upon the family of George Floyd. We pray for our city, our county. We pray for healing. We pray for comfort. We pray for a loving relationship between our peoples. And we ask that you would bless it and encourage us and strengthen us and protect us in Christ's name. Amen.
See, our ethic reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethic adopted by the board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicant law regarding official action, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid and perpetuate in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affair of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome which would have a direct, sustainable, or readily identified financial impact for any board member? Also, does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the board today? There being none, all board members have the duty and obligation to vote. Commissioner Chairman Brownie Newman is out tonight ill, so he will be excluded from voting, so we can carry on from there. And also, are there anything else that needs to be added to the agenda?
Yes, sir, you do have one additional item that we'd like to bring forward to you tonight. It's at your places. It's the resolution authorizing the execution of a subrogation agreement and that are acts related to the East Haven Project from MHO, Mountain Housing Opportunities.
Okay, put that under new business at the end. Well, with that, we will go to the consent agenda. Are there anything on the consent agenda anyone would like to pull or talk about? Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is six to nothing. Okay, now to good news. Presentation from Vaia Health, Brian Ingram and Larry Hill. We'll explain.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate being part of your agenda under good news. That's a great start, isn't it? And Commissioner Presley, appreciate your comments. Hard to even find the words to describe what we find ourselves in. So I think the more we can learn to support one another, the better off we'll all be, so thank you. I know we don't have a lot of time this evening. Probably less than a minute per page for the PowerPoint we have, so it'll be very brief. I do want to be thankful for the work that your county manager, Avril Pender, and her assistant, DK Wesley, do on your behalf for us. They're a great addition to our Board of Directors and also our County Commissioner Advisory Board. And that's probably one of the reasons why Buncombe is our favorite out of the 22 counties we work with. Just if you wouldn't share that too widely, I'd appreciate it.
You are on camera, you know that, don't you?
Okay, well. We love Buncombe County. We love all our counties. And this evening especially Buncombe. So let's really try to get into this as quickly as we can. We've tried to organize the agenda. Let's see, where am I clicking towards? Maybe it's not turned on. Am I going? Okay. Really just three broad brush sections to our agenda. You know, that having to be, of course, the efforts that we have been engaged in with Buncombe and other counties around the pandemic. Then, you know, something that we spoke to you about probably at length last year. It's really just the entire scene in relationship to funding and how that impacts services for your county and other counties. And then finally, a little bit specifically about the maintenance of effort funding specific to Buncombe County. So there's, I think, DK was able to get a copy of something that might have been omitted from your package, a two-page, two or three-page handout. It looks like the support for Viya Network providers. It has been, you know, an incredible challenge for us, as I'm sure it has been for you and many others, in our case, to make sure that our members continue to receive services. And for that to happen, it's essential that providers are able to deliver services and therefore that providers are able to remain financially viable. So that's really been the three rings in the target that we have worked towards for the past several months and been in almost daily communication with the state around how to get that done. And in large part, that involves really maximizing the flexibilities. We're kind of doing all the break glass options here. Things that we would never do for a lot of good reasons or that the state would never allow us to do that just increases the flexibilities of providers to keep delivering care. That and turn down the money spigot, to be quite honest with you. And Larry's going to talk a little bit more about that later. And even to the extent that we are uncertain about the reimbursements that we'll be able to receive, but for, let's say, a handshake deal that we've had around, you know, pay providers, push the money out there, make sure people get services. And hopefully, the General Assembly and the department will find their way to keep us whole with all of this. A little bit more about that later. Yeah, I mean, this is, and again, for brevity's sake, you know, I guess we'll just kind of keep moving here pretty quickly. You know, one of the things we are really sensitive to in these situations, and again, our situation is not that different from yours. You know, what are you going to do to directly impact citizens? And in a large organization, you know, like ours, we thought, well, one of the best ways is to get people phones. So much of the service has been modified to take advantage of telehealth. And in most cases, that means using a telephone or using streaming video, which is a great thing, believe me. That's increased access to thousands of individuals. And you know full well that in some cases, there isn't adequate coverage and this and that and the other thing. But before that, people don't have phones. So we made a purchase of 500 phones and distributed those through our provider network to those individuals who would be most able to benefit. And, you know, it's something small, but I hope something important in terms of impact on the street for folks. Money. So much of this is about money. I mean, there's just no way around that. The flexibilities increased in rates that we've just done across the board because of the additional expenses that providers have. Whole new levels of service that providers can receive reimbursement for. And in some cases, those will be in place until next year. A lot of the discussion, and in fact, I had a call, a virtual meeting this afternoon with the deputy secretaries around the specifics of how long are all of these flexibilities going to be in place? Because we've had to really turn everything inside out to do this. When are we going to stop doing it? And what kind of a ramp, off-ramp, if you will, will we have for that, for individuals and for providers? And I think to some degree, that's hinged to the state of emergency, both for the state and the federal government. Very quickly, we moved to remote work, and we have about 450 employees. So that is no small undertaking. I can tell you, this is the first public meeting that I have been in in a long time. Happy to be here. You know, our own feelings are we're going to be with this for a long time. We don't imagine opening our facilities. We have essentially three, you know, one more or less corporate office in Ridgefield, down behind the Outlet Mall, and then two other, you know, regional offices. We don't imagine we'll be opening those until probably the end of August. And in that regard, we are extremely fortunate because there are so many people whose businesses cannot transition to a virtual environment. So given the flexibilities and waivers and the great infrastructure we have in terms of technology, we're very fortunate. The third bullet there, I don't know if the pointer would work on that, but the third bullet, we're out about nine point, I don't know, nine point something net new in funding service dollars. Our actual advance has been a little over $1 million. So that gives you some idea of how dramatic our reaction has been to the need to push funding out for services and members. And I guess our good faith with the department that somehow this is all going to be made right. It's a complicated picture, and I guess I should have offered this when we began. You know, we don't expect people to understand a great deal about our business. It's fairly complex when you start to get under the surface. And we're always happy to come back for a work session. You know, we've done that with several counties, and that seems to be the best kind of exchange to really get to a layer of, you know, maybe more understanding. So if you're interested in that, you know, we'd be happy to do that. So if we don't run out of time with me yakking here, maybe Larry will be able to talk a little more about that. Well, how about we take a switch right here, Larry, and you can come on up and be the guy with all the good news about the money.
Great, there you go. Okay, thank you. Good evening, commissioners. Glad to be with you here this evening. So there's seven entities throughout the state. The next slide illustrates, you can see Vaia highlighted our net new cost. So we did this on behalf of a solicitation back to Raleigh as to, in our projections and everyone else's, it looks like, you know, net new costs are going to be in excess of $80 million. As Brian mentioned, it was, you know, kind of a handshake deal on the support. And we are actively engaged in hopefully some reimbursement talks on that. But the duration of this, this projection was through June. So, you know, we're anxiously awaiting a resolution there. The next slide, let's talk about single stream. So what we've been talking about is primarily Medicaid. The other part of our support is to uninsured. And you may have heard, and DK has obviously heard of, some changes we had to make to some of our services as a result of ongoing reductions to our funding of what we call single stream services. So I'll not go bullet by bullet, but, you know, you know, the end story is we have to match our services to the funding. And so at the end of this fiscal year, the past couple of months, very active engagement with our board and made some tough decisions that are going to save us $2 million next year. But it was to align with, as you can see on the chart, for us, over $50 million of budget reductions, primarily for uninsured. You can see the services impacted on the second bullet, behavioral health, ACT. We had to make some adjustments. There's still support there, but modified programs. You see the chart through FY '20. We're still awaiting a word of our single stream funding for next year. And here, we're going to hear about that Monday. And so, fingers crossed, you know, just like you're going to entertain a budget tonight, we're trying to finalize a budget and put in front of our board. So on to the next slide. So as I've mentioned, the budget challenge right now for us is it has slowed down the timeline. You know, the pandemic has slowed everything down. Things took a back burner. We did get some information on our per-member-per-months rates. We are essentially a public insurance company for Medicaid for certain services. So we collect insurance premiums from Medicaid from the state. We did get a draft of that, so they're not finalized, as I mentioned, single stream, not finalized. And then our ongoing efforts to support our members and providers related to the pandemic, those costs related to reimbursements are still, you know, what we call wild cards to be determined. I won't go through this in detail, but just for your information, it's a scorecard that the state produces. And if you're like me, you like metrics in traffic lighting. You can scan the page and see that Vaia is in the green and normally on the higher end of the scores. Being the CFO, I'm interested in the solvency. So top left corner, we're at 39 days cash, current ratio of 2.1. Interestingly, 2.0 is supposedly the ceiling for current ratio for DHHS. In other insurance environments, that would be on a lower end. But you can see key measures. Vaia's at 100% or 98%. Very proud of those numbers and what we do for the 22 counties of western North Carolina. Specific to Buncombe County, the maintenance of effort funds. The past few years, we've received $600,000 of support, primarily targeted to two services. The homeless, the hard-to-house chronic homeless. Those funds primarily to homeward bound, total of $278,000 for those services. And then the other is for the Buncombe County Detention Center through RHA, $322,000. That's been this past year. I know with your budget being presented tonight, there's ongoing dialogue about some modifications to that. But whatever that outcome is, we're resolved to address the needs here in Buncombe County together and look forward to next year and beyond. So with that, I think we might have ran a minute or two over, but we'll call for questions.
Any questions? Wow, okay. Well, thank you. Appreciate that, Brian, Larry.
Yep. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Y'all have a safe afternoon. Okay, next thing will be fiscal year 2021 recommended budget. Avril Pender, county manager, you will do it, won't you?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Go ahead and bring up the PowerPoint. Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to present the fiscal year 21 recommended budget. The budget process started last fall with all department heads keenly reviewing their budgets and their operations. A revamped capital projects and a newly formed information technology community reviewed departmental submissions, and we were eagerly anticipating a budget process where we could focus on addressing much-needed infrastructure and staffing needs. However, with the descent of COVID-19 in our country and our community, coupled with the realization that this crisis would be long-term with significant impacts on our economy and our revenues, we revisited our budget planning and reduced our requested budgets by $25 million or 7%. This budget demonstrates fiscal responsibility during uncertain and unprecedented times. It provides funding for increased public health and public safety staffing. It establishes funding in support of advancing strategic focus area goals as well as maintaining quality services for our community. The general fund budget is $335,648,556. The budget is balanced with a tax rate of 52.9 cents, which we have kept flat the last two fiscal years. As I mentioned, it advanced the board's newly adopted strategic plan. It provides for 11 general fund positions in emergency services and public health. It reduces overall expenditures by 1.1%. It manages anticipated revenues reduction of 0.11%. And overall, I believe it continues to maintain quality services for our citizens. In early May, you adopted our new five-year strategic plan. This plan establishes our focus areas for Buncombe County. Our community are outward-facing focus areas, our educated and capable community, environmental and energy stewardship, residents' well-being, vibrant economy. And the foundation, our operational focus areas, are equity, operational excellence, and resources. In addition, you defined the values, our core values for our organization of respect, honesty, integrity, collaboration, and equity. These values will govern our interactions at every level of the organization. We have highlighted budget areas for each priority that is captured in the fiscal year 21 budget. The list is not exhaustive, but it does capture many investments that were already aligned or newly aligned across the focus areas. For the focus area of educated and capable communities, where all residents thrive and demonstrates resiliency throughout their lives, you see our commitment to public schools and our community college with a total investment in education across Buncombe County Schools, Asheville City Schools, and AB Tech at $88.6 million. Early childhood education and development received a $72,000 increase for a total of $3,672,000 invested in existing and new early childhood programming. As I mentioned, this focus area is all residents thriving throughout their lives. Therefore, also captured in this area is funding for aging services, $540,000 to assist our seniors to remain and age safely at home. The environmental education and stewardship focus area is to provide high-quality air, water, farmland, and renewable energy for future generations. $872,000 for purchase of hybrid vehicles are included. Staff assessed the vehicle recommended for replacement and determined that 90% of them can be hybrid vehicles. This helps us towards our goal to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. In addition, we are recommending $240,000 for acquisition of land conservation easements. For the focus area of resident well-being, defined as our residents being safe, healthy, and engaged in their community, we are investing $3.9 million towards justice services and $1.3 million for funding of complementary para-transportation. Our vibrant economy focus area is robust and a regional sustainable economy. To that end, we are investing $1.3 million for economic development incentives to promote job growth and increase median household wages, and $2.3 million as a continued commitment to affordable housing. For the foundational focus areas of equity, operational excellence, and resources, investment span across internal departments, such as, as well as allocates funding for partnerships that underpin successful delivery of county and community services. You see $889,000 for strategic partnership grant funding, $600,000 for Stipping Point and Isaac Coleman grant funding, and $34,000 for enhancements in cybersecurity, as well as 11 recommended new positions in the general fund for emergency services and public health. Included in this recommended budget with an effective date of January 1st are 10 general fund positions, six full-time emergency services paramedics, three full-time telecommunications for 911 call center, and one public health nurse. Beginning July 1st, the new fiscal year, we are recommending one part-time emergency medical services medical director position, one full-time safety and justice challenge grant-funded position. Since this is grant-funded, the position is time-limited and will expire when the grant is complete, and five full-time positions in the solid waste disposal fund. The general fund is balanced at $335,648,568. This includes an appropriated fund balance of $11,334,951. My recommendation of appropriate $11.3 million of fund balance for fiscal year 21 maintains a fund balance policy level with an estimated fund balance percentage of 16.6%, just slightly above the goal and the policy levels that you set as a board at 15%. Additionally, this level of appropriation keeps the tax rate flat at 52.9 cents. Now the numbers. Total budgeted revenues of $324 million.
Ms. Pender, could I ask you a question before we get into that slide? There's a few back, but it's, on environmental energy stewardship, one of the goals that we had where we started was farmland preservation. I know that was in here. And I wanted to make sure that, and I guess under the term environmental is where that's coming, but it was a specific goal that we had and we were going to have this, you know, that was just something we were going to work on over the next X number of years. But is it necessary for that to be worded in there or not?
Farmland preservation?
Yeah, is that, is that in, let me go up here. See, environmental energy stewardship is where farmland preservation was.
Yes.
Yeah, when you go back to advancing our strategic plan, that's, that's Yeah, when you go back to advancing our strategic plan, that's where, there, yeah. So it's supposed to be under there.
Uh huh.
I'm not seeing it anywhere, and I know when you put in there the easements, that that's, that's part, that's part of it, but it, but other, other strategies can also come in where, you know, if we, if, if there was an area where it did make sense to construct or build, or, you know, we wanted to preserve that, you know, farmland in the Lester, wherever it might be, I just don't see it anywhere, and I just wanted to make sure that it's in there.
Correct. These are just the title of the focus areas. When you go down to the target goals beneath is when you'll see the farmland preservation, the sensitive tracts, the hillsides, that's where you'll see it in the goal sections, but I can recirculate the actual document for the strategic plan, but these are just the titles of the target areas, and they're broad in nature, but when you get into the targets, you'll see the farmland is in there.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. So continuing back on the budget and the actual numbers of the budget, as you see, general fund revenues are $324.3 million. Adverse loan taxes account for 65.4% of the general fund revenues. The annual growth in the valuation base is projected to be 1.4 billion or 3.8%. Bring in our total estimated base for fiscal year 2021 to 40.5 billion, resulting in estimated net increase in revenues, adverse loan revenues of $5.9 million. Intergovernmental revenues account for 13.6% is the next largest contributor to our revenues. This primarily funds health and human services and is expected to decline this year by 2.8%. Our third largest contributor is sales tax, representing 9.3% of revenues. With the impact of COVID-19, we are anticipating $3.5 million less than fiscal year 20's budget. This is an overall decrease of 10.3%. The general fund budget is adopted at the functional level. This chart shows the recommended allocation of each function. Overall, the proposed expenditures rate of decline is 1.1% lower than fiscal year 20's amended budget. Education is our largest allocation at 27.3%, totaling 91.7 million. Human services at 25.7, at 86.4 million. Public safety, 20.3%, totaling 68.1 million. These run out our top three functional areas and account for 73.3% of the general fund. The remaining 26.7% consists of general government at 14.7% or 49.3 million, our debt at 5.9% at 19.7 million. Culture and recreation, 2.5% or 84, 8.4 million. Economic and physical development at 2.3%, 7.7 million. And our last is other financing uses, 1.3%, totaling 4.3 million. The largest component of the general fund is funding for education. As approximately $88.6 million for AB Tech, Buncombe County Schools, and Asheville Schools, I am recommending a 1.1% increase to fund the schools and a flat amount to AB Tech to their fiscal year 20's budget. The county is calculated on restricted growth. Following adjustments for pandemic, related, related impact to revenues is 1.08%, and that is the formula that we agreed with the schools that we would share. So at 1.8%, the recommendation of 1.1 is consistent at our recommended growth rate. Included in this budget, I'm also recommending funds for capital needs and information technology needs.
Ms. Pender, I have a quick question before we move from education. That slide says 88 million. When we look up at the colorful circle, it says 91. Is that early, accounting for early childhood?
Yes, ma'am, the three million.
Okay, thank you.
I'm recommending projects in, for capital projects totaling 6.3 million to be financed with debt proceeds. 3.5 million of that amount is to relocate the fleet services complex, which we plan to bring forward to you at your next meeting. The impact of fiscal year 21 would not change, but I want that to be a separate conversation on that funding. And the overall debt would not change in 21, even though I bring that forward to you earlier. Also recommending courthouse and jail repairs totaling 1.4 million. Debt payments on these funds will begin in fiscal year 2022. Fiscal year 21's impact will be the debt issuance costs of $100,000. Also included in the budget is 1.37 million for fleet replacements, that is 24 sheriff's vehicles and two emergency services vehicles. These vehicles will be financed for 59 months, just under five years, and the fiscal year 21 estimated debt payments are $152,000. For the Lester crossing build-out, we are working on a space needs and design plan. This will be presented to you later this month. As a reminder, savings from a prior debt issuance is expected to be used to finance this project. Also our pay-go capital, where we will use cash to buy these items. In addition to the debt finance projects, I'm recommending $385,000 in pay-go. This is largely for greenway commitments and information technology upgrades to existing systems. We mentioned before that we had a transition to telecommuting, and this is to help to shore up our cybersecurity platform. As I mentioned earlier, with the anticipated reduction in revenues, we deferred several departmental requests. Should revenues come in higher than expectations, there are several projects and personal requests that we would prioritize and bring forward to you for your consideration. In addition to setting the tax rate for the county, you set the tax rate for the fire districts. This year, one fire district is requesting a tax increase. On May 5th, you heard from Upper Harmony Fire Department. They are requesting a 2-cent tax increase going from 14.5 to 16.5 cents. Included here is a list of reference documents for additional information associated with the fiscal year 21 recommended budget. These are available on the county's website, and individuals can go and look at our Budget Explorer and look at the details, line-by-line details. The public is invited to share input throughout emails and by phone. At last budget work session, we briefly mentioned allowing citizens to come in person to attend a June 16th public hearing meeting. If you agree to allow in-person, we can establish protocols for social distancing and face coverings. So that's a conversation I'd like us to have today to decide how we want to structure that public hearing. And the second point from the public hearing was if all commissioners are going to be in-person at that meeting, we could adopt the budget at that meeting, or we can have a special meeting on the 23rd. So there are two points I'd like for us to clarify tonight, and if there are any questions on what I presented, we can talk about those as well. Again, thank you for the opportunity to present the 21 budget.
Okay, what, what would we do as far as in-person? What would be the protocols, and how many would we have, and so on, all that?
So the guidance at this point is still 10 in the room excluding the commissioners, so we would make sure our seats, and we would make sure that we will allow one person at a time to make sure there's no more than 10 visitors in the audience at a time. And they would require, as our guidance is now face covering in a public setting, so they will require to have their face coverings as well.
And it wouldn't be an either-or. We could, we could have, we could still have email comments, and if we decided to have in-person, we could have in-person and email.
We just need to know emails and the phones, we can do that as well, but we do need to know if you're going to have in-person, so we can advertise as much and have people to attend.
Any other question?
I, I want us to work out where they can come in here and speak.
Yeah, I think it'd be.
I, I think that's, we, you know, to try to do this through an email or through a phone, or so many things, so I would like to some way, somehow work it out where the public can come in here and address the commissioners about the budget.
I see head nods.
I don't have, I'm fine. I don't have a problem with it.
I see head nods, so we would make that, we'll make that so. Thanks.
So how will we let the public know that?
We advertise that.
So advertise it? We put it on the website too, and all that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay.
And, and the last point would be adoption on the 16th for keep it for the 23rd special meeting.
I'm sorry, I think, you know, we, we would have public comment on the 16th, then we're going to adopt the budget, so it's almost like we've already predetermined what we were going to do, and before we even hear public comment, I'd like to hear from the public first, and then be able to go back and see if there should be something we changed, and then come back to 23rd. That's, that's just my preference.
Well, we can, we can hear from, we would hear from the public before we adopted it. So if they made comments, or they had moved us, we could change it. So, I mean, we could, I mean, we, I mean, we could do what you're saying, but just so you know that those that would come in and make public comment would do that prior to the adoption of the budget, so if we wanted to make any adjustments as a result of that, we could do it.
Yes, sir.
And I think really what you said was, I think I heard you right, is we go ahead and plan the June 23rd instead of saying, well, we're going to try to do it the 16th. Is that correct, Anthony? It makes it sound like, let's not even worry about the 23rd.
Well, I mean, I think we ought to plan for at least the 23rd and see how many people, I mean, I don't want to come in here thinking, okay, we've seen the budget, and we've listened to the public before we adopt it, and then we adopt it as soon as they talk. It's like, we, we need to grasp what they're saying. So before we just up and say, okay, we've, we've heard you, now we're just going to adopt it, let's, let's get a chance to grasp what they're saying. And if it looks like we could do it that night, then yeah, but I think we ought to plan on the 23rd and coming back to, to do the official adoption.
So would you be, would you be comfortable with, you want to plan that out now, or would you be comfortable with, if you feel like you've had sufficient public comment on the 16th, would you be comfortable or uncomfortable with adopting it that evening?
I'm not going to be uncomfortable either way. I'm saying that, that to listen to someone speak on the 16th and then go into an adoption, are we fully grasping what they're saying? I mean, we can grasp it and say, yeah, but, but then we got to look over, I mean, if you look at the budget, it's 65 pages. So if someone had a specific issue, he gives us a chance to highlight it, go back and look at it, then it would be just to sit here and highlight, and then try to make decisions on a, on the, on the, you know, just on the fly. I'm just not comfortable making a decision on the fly.
I couldn't support it either way.
And either one, does either one fulfill our requirements in terms of, what if we have our meeting on 16th, see where we're at? If we feel like we've had enough time to digest and process, we take the vote? If we need to call a special meeting for the 23rd, we go ahead and do so at that point?
Do we need to advertise the adoption of them, and, or we can just?
We have some flexibility here. I mean, the, the advertisement for the budget public hearing is going out tomorrow or the next day, and if the board determines that it wants to meet on the 23rd following public comment or whatever happened on the 16th, you can continue that process.
Yeah, we can continue to meet. Continue to meet. That's what I was.
So that's not the question, though, because I agree to 23rd, we have time for that one. But if we listen to public comment on the 16th, and then we decide that we want to adopt it on the 16th, we can't do that if we don't advertise, right?
It, it is being advertised, so that can happen.
But what are we advertising? Are we advertising a public hearing or adoption of?
Advertising a public hearing, and as soon as you have the public hearing, you can adopt it.
Got it.
Or we could, or we could do it on the 23rd.
Yeah.
Right, yes.
Well, we can decide that.
Yeah, we can decide that on the 16th.
We can decide, yeah, because it could be we don't have that much, you know, you could have two or three, we don't know, or you could have 20 to come in, but all the same thing, and, you know, we, so I think it would be better to leave it open where we, we have the ability, we can either approve it that night, or if we have a lot coming in, move it to the 23rd.
But my calendar is clear and open for the 23rd, Commissioner Pendleton.
Me too.
At your request, that is done.
Huh, right.
Well, my calendar is open anytime, because I can't travel.
Okay. Avril Pender, thank you for that, okay?
Yeah.
I don't think we had any question.
Well, I've got some, I've got a comment or two. So, you know, there, you know, there are those that won't agree with, with this, but to keep the, to keep the budget flat at 52.9, to keep the budget flat at 52.9 with, with, you know, municipalities struggling to do that, other municipalities struggling to do that, I think is, I think the word my grandson would use is awesome, and I think that I, I don't see, you know, the, the core services, I think there, there are some, you know, not everybody will be happy with, with the budget, but nobody ever is. But to keep, to keep the rate flat, I mean, I think it's, you know, that, you know, until COVID hit, Buncombe County was, was in a really good spot. From a revenue situation, from a sales tax situation, there, I mean, the budget could have went in a lot of directions. We could have done, you know, there could have been a lot more services that we, you know, that maybe had been on, on our list for a while that we could have done, we could have, I believe, probably cut the rate, but sales tax impacted us, a lot of things impacted us, and again, I just, I'm, I'm glad to have a flat rate in a difficult time.
I'd like to commend the staff, because I think you've done an excellent job in this time, when you look at what we are going through, and when you look at the budget that we have, hopefully we will pass, because it could be a lot worse, and a lot of counties in the state would love to be where we are now. Plus, when you look at what we have come through, you know, the disaster with the internal problems we had before this, but I can't say enough about what the county and commend you all, because you've done a good job in doing this, and we're keeping the budget flat, and when you really look at it, we're continuing to give the same level of service. And that's what I think is important, yeah. Sure, you can't, we can't satisfy everybody, it's unfortunate, but we've done a good job.
Commissioners, I do want to publicly thank the budget department. They have worked tirelessly to put these numbers together, so I want to say thank you to Jennifer, Rusty, Sam, and John.
Yeah.
And our department heads as well, because every time we went back to say, okay, this is still too much, we need to cut more, they've been responsive. Thanks.
Jennifer's smiling, so that's a good sign. Well, if no more questions, thank you again, Avril. Okay. And forgot a while ago, Black Recognized Sheriff Quentin Miller is here. Appreciate you being in with us tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Sheriff.
Okay, do you have anything on the county manager report? Nothing there, old business. So next is under new business. Stonie Blevins, federal home and community care block grant. You've got help with you, Stonie.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Commissioners, good to see you tonight, and hello to all those who may be watching at home virtually. Tonight, we want to bring before you the funding plan for the home and community care block grant. Just to refresh your memory. Now I'm having trouble with this thing. So really, this is our primary funding source for aging services in the county, in addition to some county dollars that Ms. Pender mentioned before. So about three-quarters of our total allegation, allocation to fund aging services in Buncombe County comes through the federal government. comes through the federal government. It goes to the State Division of Health and Human Services and then is sent down to counties to be appropriated to local service providers to meet the needs of those sixty and older. It really falls in line with our strategic priority of helping citizens to age in place. The funding allocation, the federal funds for fiscal year twenty-one is one million, five hundred and six thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars. In addition, the county provides a five hundred thousand dollars in county funds that we match with those federal dollars to sort of expand our services to the aging community. The BOCC has some responsibilities, however, in the allocation of these funds every year by state policy, specifically three things. One, we need you to approve the allocation plan for how the dollars will be spent, the federal dollars. We also, you are required by policy to appoint a lead agency every year to oversee the allocation of these HCCBG funds and also to appoint a committee to serve as a block grant advisory committee for these funds. This is a little bit busy. I'm sorry, there's not much way to get it any, any bigger and still be on one page. But here's the actual funding plan that is being presented to you from the allocations committee that is, exists today. And as you can see, we've broken it down by the federal dollars and what agencies that is going to in addition to the county dollars for a total of two million dollars, seven hundred and eighty-nine. Also, just to point out on that second to the last column, just to explain that a little bit. The committee thought with, in the midst of the pandemic, as you can imagine, sort of the last quarter of this year, we weren't able to spend all the dollars as they were allocated because some of the services that we fund were not able to operate. This is a population that we are encouraging to stay home. So obviously, we're not running congregate meal sites. You know, we're not running adult day health and adult daycare during this time. So we, for the services we felt that could be impacted in that first quarter, we held back twenty-five percent of the allocation to see what happens with the money. And then after a quarter, we can reevaluate if those agencies are spending at their annual rate. We can, we're just, we'll just add it right back in. If they're not, it gives us the flexibility to move those dollars to a service provider that perhaps is providing more services in relation to the pandemic. So this is sort of an adjustment that the committee felt would be wise to implement in, in light of the pandemic as we see what happens through the next quarter.
So Stoney, you have a question on that, please? Okay, so, um, I'm familiar with several, several of these, but particularly, uh, Daystate in, in Kandler and I'm just, it's just an amazing, you know. They just provide an amazing service to the community. And so you've spoken to them, right? And they, they're okay, they're, so what you're saying is that there's not a reduction unless they just don't need it.
Right. So if they were not able to, no, they've not been reduced. Their allocation is just what we're saying, right? But if they were unable to spend it because they can't open, so say by the governor's order, they couldn't open.
Right.
They wouldn't be able to serve. So then if that lasted a quarter, then we would still fund them fully for the three-quarters they were open, but it would give us the flexibility to take those dollars, which we would have to do, and reallocate them to a service that was open, if that makes sense.
Because you would not be able to, to give them money that they could not use, basically.
Right, because they wouldn't be able to bill us for it, right? They wouldn't be able to bill units of service if they were not open.
Okay, well, just love all these groups, but shout out to Daystate tonight, so I just wanted to make sure. Thank y'all.
And then, so our request tonight is really twofold. Uh, one is we're asking that you would approve the HCCBG and County Aging Fund Plan for State Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-One as presented. The second one is that you would appoint Buncombe County HHS to serve as the lead agency for the next fiscal year. We've met with Land of Sky Regional Council, who has served in that capacity for approximately the last ten years. They have actually encouraged us to take over the lead agency responsibility as many of their county, other counties that they serve do. It also would honestly save the county thirty thousand dollars in county dollars and we have the staff to, to accomplish this, and I should have introduced her at the beginning. And that staff member is Jennifer Teague, who is our Adult and Aging Manager, has a long, rich background in aging services in, in several counties. She also sat on the allocations committee this year. So I brought her in in case you had questions that perhaps I couldn't answer about the process. And, um, also, it doesn't really take Land of Sky out of it because as the area aging agency, they are all involved in this service by state policy. So they still would actually administer the contracts to these agencies for the HCCB dollars, not the county dollars. And they also do the program monitoring and they do that in all the counties in their region. And, um, and of course, we will administer the county aging funds. So those will be our two requests for this evening. Any questions?
So I'll make a motion to approve the HCCBG and County Aging Funding Plan for SFY Twenty Twenty-One.
I'll second.
All in favor? Well, no, we can open it up, uh, any co, well, I want to let everyone know we don't have any, uh, public comment on this tonight, so any more questions? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes six, nothing.
Got to do the second one now. I'll make a motion to appoint Buncombe County HHS to serve as a county lead agency for HCCBG in fiscal year twenty-one.
A second.
Anyone got anything to say? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six, nothing, pass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stoney. Uh, next thing on here is a rate adjustment for purchased transportation service provided under the transportation agreement between the county of Buncombe and the city of Asheville. Matt Cable, planning manager, will explain this.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for reading the title, that was a long one.
Yeah, that was, that was awesome.
Apologize for it. This item, and I was before you in late May of last year. So annually, we have the opportunity to make rate adjustments to our existing purchase transportation agreement between Buncombe County and the city of Asheville. And that agreement allows the city of Asheville to purchase transportation services from the county. Part of the tenants of that agreement are that we wouldn't charge the city more than the operating contract cost. As you recall, in May, we came before the board to discuss the award of a new contract that will become effective July one, uh, which has an operating contract rate of two dollars, two point two eight two five cents per service mile. Uh, and so we need to make an adjustment to the existing contract rate that we have with the city of Asheville. The current structure is a little bit more complicated in terms of how we bill that rate. And that has to do with the fact that hours of service were extended, days of service were added. And so those were kind of at a premium cost due to change orders to the contract that happened over that time. But we're at a, a point that we can propose a flat rate for service because our contracts were bid based on the existing service that we provide and all of our, our miles are billed at the same rate by the operating contractor. So what we've proposed here is a flat rate to the city of Asheville of two dollars and twenty-eight cents per mile. That would apply during all service hours that we operate this service on their behalf. And also the elimination of a ten percent administrative charge. And what we're trying to do with the elimination of that charge is, is basically equate the operating contract rate with the rate we bill the city with the understanding that the county continues to subsidize additional costs, including fuel, administrative support, because we do all of their eligibility and intake for any new customers. And then as well as capital vehicle acquisition or any other equipment that we purchase. So that's how we subsidize that service beyond the base operating cost. There is a table provided in your agenda item tonight which shows if we left the rate unchanged, what that cost would be. The new proposed rate is actually a reduction in what that anticipated cost would be to the city. We will be subsidizing that service slightly more than we would normally have planned. These costs are based on projected service volumes with the assumption that we return to normalcy fairly quickly in the next fiscal year. But those costs to the city may also be reduced if service volumes don't return. Further, that cost is what we would anticipate as a maximum projected cost given that the impacts of COVID- nineteen will likely continue in the early part of the year and that the city's costs are offset by fair revenues that are collected. So this would be the maximum if they also continue their fare-free program for the entirety of the year. The recommended motion is included there for you, which would be to go to that two dollar and twenty-eight cent flat rate for the city and eliminate that surcharge.
So I've got, I got a question. Uh, it's not, it's for, uh, Mr. Frue or Ms. Hockaday. The second, the transportation agreement that's here is dated, and it's two thousand thirteen, July two thousand thirteen, signed by a whole lot of people that aren't here anymore. And so does it, does that, um, should that be redone at some point in time or not?
That might be a question for Matt. I mean, if it's, if it's out of date.
Well, whoever, it's, it's just one I don't understand, so.
The initial agreement and the way that that has been processed in the past is the agreement is on the city's interest. I mean, it's in their interest that structuring of that agreement. And you'll note that the existing transportation agreement also doesn't include the updated rates. So they have taken the lead on updating that transportation agreement and they have not taken the, um, the steps to actually modifying that agreement from their side and providing us with a new agreement. That's certainly something we can pursue. There are ways that we could clean this up with our rates. The tenant that it provides us is that we can adjust the rates as long as we provide them with notice of that rate adjustment and the guidelines about which we can charge a maximum rate. So annually, like I said, last year, we provided that new rate and they did not choose to provide an amended contract. But that's something we definitely can pursue with the city, given our continuing relationship.
So I think if the Commissioners would just take a, take a look at that, that I would think that you might agree with me that that should be, um, I don't know if there's any changes in the body of it or not, but it's, um, two thousand thirteen. And again, um, I would think it would be good to have some of the, the newer folks that are in those positions, a newer agreement, so. So how do we do that?
We can take a look at that and make sure the negotiation climate is what we need it to be at this point in time as well. So we'll take a look at that.
So can y'all just make a note to bring it back to us later? Can we make the motion without that, you know, my suggestion interfering with the motion tonight?
No, sir.
No, sir, I think we, we do have to have a rate set for July one and we might not have this negotiated based on all that's going on with the city and us at this point in time. So we would recommend that you have the rate set and then we can look to renew the, the agreement at a later date or update that new.
Can I make a motion like that?
The motion would be to, uh, set, set the rate.
Set the rate at two, at two point, was it two point two eight?
Yes, sir.
But, you know, I'd like to see us, you know, give guidance to get that, uh, agreement redone, so. It's a motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six to nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next thing up is, uh, no, we added something to new business, right?
That's right.
And Avril, you're, or Brendan.
Brendan Friedman is going to add, talk about that.
Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners. I think last time I, I had the opportunity to speak to you is about excise taxes. And Commissioner Beltrier mentioned how exciting that topic was, so I thought I'd bring another very exciting topic before the board. And this is a, a subordination agreement with mountain housing opportunities. I've, I've written a memo that if you've had an opportunity to review it, I can answer any questions. In short, there's a real estate transaction coming up and the county is contractually obligated to sign this agreement so it can go forward. And we just need to make that happen.
So are we making a motion appointing you to do that?
This would just be a motion to pass a resolution that, that should have been provided.
Yeah, we got it.
The resolution just appoints a county manager or her designee to do any acts necessary to.
I move that we pass a resolution authorizing the execution of the subrogation agreements and other acts related to community development loan for the East Haven project.
My second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six, zero.
Thank you, sir. That was a little bit more exciting than the excise tax, just so you know.
Now, uh, last thing we have, I guess, is appoint, uh, board appointments and.
I'll nominate Carl Coon for the WNC Regional Air Quality Board.
A second.
I think that's on one. Does anyone have anyone else that? Well, uh, how do we do this? Vote or go down through here and? Okay.
Just vote.
Vote on, all in favor of Carl Coon?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six, zero.
Yeah, we are so together tonight, aren't we?
We are. Well, I'm out of papers, so we must be finishing up. We have no public comment from anyone, so, uh, at six oh eight, I will, oh, all the, see there, I knew we was on the curfew. Sheriff, if you've got anything you'd like to share with us, updates or anything, we appreciate you being here.
Good evening.
Good evening, Sheriff.
So first, I would just like, uh, thank you for the opportunity to be before you. I think everyone has been paying attention to the situation we are facing as a county as well as the city. And, uh, one, I just come to you tonight to, uh, keep us law enforcement in your prayers. And also, um, right now, we have approximately one hundred and fifty folks gathering as far as being peaceful. So I just wanted to say that before I have to run out of here and make sure that, uh, I be there for the community as well as the city. So again, thank you for what you're doing. I think I've reached out to each one of you at some point over the weekend. And so again, I think, uh, we're going to have to have a serious conversation at some point to, uh, address the issues that are before us. So I just thank you for your time this evening and well is your time in the future. So thank you.
Sheriff, I have a question. Do you have any, uh, liberty to, to say that, you know, in the last couple of days, maybe particularly last night, that, um, you know, that these, um, these gatherings started out peaceful and then they turned into something other, other than, other than that? Do you have any, any comments on, you know, the people of, of, of the city and how, you know, what happened with others that may have, uh, you know, come in?
Yes, I would. I would just simply say that, uh, last night in particular, we had a situation with, uh, people using mortars to fire fireworks at our law enforcement folks who were standing in front of the, uh, police department. Uh, I would tell you that we were able to locate one and arrest one. And he was, uh, his address, address was listed as being in Georgia. So I would say that, uh, I believe that a lot of what we're seeing is not necessarily from our folks here in the county. And so, uh, tonight, I'm sure you're aware that the city is, uh, imposed a curfew. And so I would ask that folks, uh, stay at home and abide by the curfew. And this would give us the opportunity, because I believe people have basically come to town, infiltrated Buncombe County with their actions, because a lot of people I have not seen, uh, here that I would recognize. And I would say that I've been in this community for quite some time. And so, uh, I would tell you that I believe it's people coming from other places that'll come to our county. And that is another reason that we ask that people stay at home because it would give us the opportunity to expose those who are now here in our community. And in my, my, I would say, bringing the havoc and chaos that's happening within our county and city.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes.
Praying for y'all tonight, surely.
Sheriff, thank you and we'll all be praying for you and all the officers and everyone keeping us safe, so thank you.
Robert, could I make an announcement?
Yes.
You'll be, we'll be getting more information, Commissioners, almost instantly. I think the press release is going out now. But the community of faith in our community in Asheville, it's Central Methodist, First Baptist, my church, Mount Zion, a lot are coming together at noon Thursday, this Thursday, in front of Central United Methodist so that the people within the city and county, we can express and talk about things that are going on locally. And we don't have, hopefully outsiders, you know, but, and we will have control. They have the speakers, the mayor will be there. It'll be a real nice affair, but I hope all of us can attend to support.
And that's when?
Thursday, Thursday at noon.
Thursday at noon.
From the Central Methodist. There's plenty of parking in our parking deck there at the Health and Human Service. We got parked.
I do want to make one announcement back to the budget. You have the budget message document with you?
Yeah.
It's part of that attachment, appendix, page not forty-three. You have all of the grants that we are proposing from the Early Childhood, Isaac Coleman, Tipping Point and Strategic Partner Grants. So if you take a look at those and if you have any concerns, remember this year, we used that community.
Right.
Committee to do those recommendations. So if there's any questions and concerns, this went out public yesterday for everyone to see. So the ones that did not get any funding, they're aware. So I'm not sure if you will have any calls, but I just want to make sure that you know that it is in this booklet and it's also online linked to this agenda item as well.
Thank you.
After the, the budget process, I would love to hear an update on how the first round went.
Yeah, I would, too.
Yeah, lessons learned, things we need to look at differently, that'd be fantastic.
Okay, with that, our announcements, our next meeting will be June sixteenth at three o'clock. The Commissioners' pre-meeting or?
It's actually a briefing.
Briefing, we hadn't changed it yet, have we?
We'll be here.
Yeah, at the briefing. Be at two hundred College Street, room three twenty-six. And then our next regular meeting will be June sixteenth at five o'clock, right here at two hundred College Street, room three twenty-six. With that, six fifteen, we adjourn.
Good job, Vice Chair. What do we?